Education Fire Facility in the time is 6:00 PM. Will you please rise to join me in pledging allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in it. Thank you. Okay, next order of business is the minutes from September 23rd.
Will they be accepted?
Do we have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? We were all present at that meeting. No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, six-four and one absent. Next item on agenda, warrants. Printed in a new format, or at least on the paper. I'm told those are you on your iPad, it makes it easier to read.
It certainly does. Doesn't change the bottom line at all.
It doesn't?
No.
Okay, any questions? Start with you, Justin.
I do not.
Jim?
I do, on page 10, item number 61, invoice number 610-344. It's Pleasant Valley, Mount Anthony School, and it's quite a significant amount of money there. Page 10. The date is 9/27/13. Can you see it? Here.
You need to go back to the previous page, page nine. It's under Peckham Industries.
Circle there.
It's a paving.
Oh, it's paving, okay.
It's a paving.
All right, thanks.
Those are the roads, School Street, Mount Anthony.
Yes.
Pleasant Valley.
All right, I got you.
All contracted paving.
All right, thanks.
Now Pleasant Valley, we were running a test down there.
Yes.
And where... What did we do and what were the results of that test?
The tests were similar to what the problems we had on a middle panel road. Even though it hardened the surface, potholes continued to form. Neither one of them were successful and we have since put black top over the top.
Okay, so we're no longer going to worry about trying that new technology on this stuff, we're gonna...
It just doesn't hold in our part of the body.
The new member, Tom, do you remember when we had that discussion, do you know what we're talking about?
No.
About a year and a half ago, a year ago, I guess, right? We were going to try to, was just grind the pavement, is that what it was, Stuart?
We ground the pavement and we essentially returned them to a grapple road condition and used calcium chloride to harden the surface. It had been tried throughout the United States at the time, we thought we could save a little money, but it turns out it just doesn't work for us. And we had to move back in to put black top down in both cases.
In middle panel road?
Middle panel road.
Yeah, the test was out in Pleasant Valley also. Excuse me, anything else, Jim? That'll do it.
Tom?
No.
Greg?
No.
Sharon?
No.
Okay, moving on. Any citizens out there? Mike, come on up. State your name for those who don't know you, Mike. Mike Bethel?
That's good, thank you. First off, thank you for the second round of emails. And in the emails, I found a couple of things that were interesting. One is, you know, the Burlington Labs, they'd like that proclamation. Are you gonna, you know, if you're gonna address that or not, or...
We are going to address it when the date, we have another event that's going to coincide with that, I believe, that has something to do with that, right Stuart?
It'll be on the next agenda.
Next agenda.
Do you think you're gonna give them a proclamation, or...
We'll take, bring it to a vote. If you're asking me, I'm in favor of it. We'll see what the vote is next meeting.
Okay. And the other, the other one in the emails, I found a, a letter sent to us, a request from Globe, G-L-O-B-E-U-S Consulting. And subject was re, I got my wrong glasses on, relocation proposal. They wanted to basically reply, I guess you guys have got this in your, your emails, or you know what it's about. Did we reply to them? And did we send out what they requested about why they would want to put us on a list for a Japanese company that might want to come here and set up something for about $2 million? And the employees were, there was about $40,000 a year for six salaried employees and 19 full-time hourly jobs at around $12 an hour. And it says, "This company is looking to buy or lease 15,000 to 20,000 square foot building. The total investment would be $2 million." And then it breaks down how much, where it would all go. Did we reply?
We did reply. Mike Harrington sent back an email responding initially and asking for personal contact with the gentleman whose name was at the bottom of the email. The response to Mr. Harrington was, "Thank you for responding to our web form," which he did not do. It turns out after further investigation that Globius Consulting doesn't exist as a company. There is a Globus, G-L-O-B-U-S, which is a consulting firm that does work with Asian companies. We think this is probably some sort of a spam or any number of reasons for them contacting us and looking for information about the community, but we don't think it's legit.
Okay.
You don't think it's legit?
No.
This guy Ben Leighton, you didn't get ahold of him or anything, though?
He never responded to subsequent emails afterwards.
It just sounded like in your emails, it was a heck of a, you know, opportunity knocks.
We agree.
I'm glad, I wish, I wish that they had then replied, because it would've been a good thing.
Before we leave it, just so that we're all on the same page, because this came down through John, I think maybe it was it...
It actually came through the select board email.
Right. I imagine this is not something that's totally unusual and that there are responses that are pretty standard to these types of inquiries. If you can determine without a lot of effort that it's not just spam or scam, that, you know, we have a process to respond to these companies.
And we do.
Yeah.
So there was no response at all?
The response that came back was, was, "Thank you for responding to our web form." It was pretty, so obviously there's somebody out there, there's somebody attempting to gather information on communities, but it's not, it's not a corporation that exists.
Well then, a question I would have, is there corporations that exist that we could mail out something to, to let them know that we are interested in something, aren't industrial or whatever?
Mike, there are corporations all over the place that are, that represent companies that are looking to expand. We have not been contacted by one that we think is legitimate at this time, so there's, there's nobody to respond to. We don't think we have a true search going on.
Because I asked Peter from BCIC and he didn't even know about the request, and I think if, whether it's a legit request or not, I think things ought to be forwarded like this to BCIC for them to follow through. I mean, they got the real expertise on industry and...
Well, we, I get, I get things like this on a fairly regular basis for people that claim to represent Asian companies. I think probably because it's hard to follow up and justify whether, you know, find out whether they're legit or not. But, um, yeah, certainly, I mean, if you have something that's legitimate, that's a good, that's a good direction to go in. But a lot of the things that I get at the office are bogus.
Yeah, I mean, usually I can tell because the grammar is so bad and the address is so stupid.
And actually, this one wasn't too bad. I would, you know, I was kind of hopeful that it might be turned out to be something.
It looked really promising.
Yeah, it did look legit on a face value, but it was...
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else out there, like, speak to board, please? Come on, Mike. As a citizen or a staff member?
Um, well... Just, just a quick public announcement. Many of you probably saw the email, but for those in the audience and watching at home who don't know, we got a notice and it came through the town clerk's office about the starting of Front Porch Forum, which is an online virtual neighborhood or community. We're the, actually, one of the last communities in Vermont to get this. The reason I'm putting that out there, one is for the public awareness, but two, you have to have at least 100 members for your site, for your community, to become active. And I believe we're just a few shy. So we're about a little over 20 shy of having our front porch Bennington Forum become active. So this is just to let the community know that it exists. It's a, it's a virtual community, much like a community bulletin board, so you can go on and register and then you're able to post things like tag sales or lost pets or trying to sell something. Again, it doesn't get really deep into who's posting unless they decide to give that information away. And so again, it's a, it's a way of taking what we might've done in the old days by getting to know our neighbors and learning a little bit about them and posting around town, and this takes it to the web to do that.
And how do they sign up?
The gentleman started this was here when we were doing the rural development program. He was one, he spoke to us then and he got it started. And I know I've been corresponding with him, it was about 18 months ago, I guess, when they were here. And from what I understand from the communities that are involved, there's a lot of good information that's passed around. And it has to do with your communities, basically, a lot of it, so...
And you go online, you put in frontporchforum.com, and when you put in your name and street address, it automatically brings you to the Bennington Front Porch Forum.
Okay.
Is there a link on our website for this, or no?
There is, under noticed, public notices. So a public notice went out and it did go out on our Facebook page as well.
Okay.
Okay, Michael.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes?
I knew this meeting, so I don't know what's going on right now.
Okay, why don't you come up here and just introduce yourself and tell us why you knew the meeting, why you're here, and what you'd like to talk to us.
Your name, please?
Ronald Conroy.
Okay.
I'm here because I wrote an article in the Bennington Banner on Saturday.
Okay.
Having to do with panhandling.
Okay.
This is my response to the article in the paper.
Okay.
"A person standing at the stoplight at exiting Walmart asking for spare change does not affect, affect people's quality of life. If someone has felt threatened or unsafe because of a panhandler, they should have filed a police report instead of going to the Chamber of Commerce, or the better, Bennington Corporation," which is a nonprofit organization, I guess, here in town. They accept money, hand out money, that's what nonprofit is. "Are there any police reports that can prove the threats from panhandlers? When a person gives money to a panhandler, they should automatically assume the money might not be used in the way the giver wants it used. Once money has been given, you can't tell them how to spend it. Big deal if someone bought a muzzleloader," that was one of the complaints in the paper. "If a person can legally purchase a gun, then let, let them be able to buy a gun. Violating the Second Amendment by telling that person cannot buy a gun, I don't believe in that." Just, I'm sorry, I'm real nervous right now. This is the first time I've ever done this. Apparently, Police Chief Paul Dou...
Dusset.
Dusset went to speak to this person who purchased the muzzleloader and convinced them to return it. To me, that would be excessive, not really considered excessive force, but the police chief using his position at the police station to convince a person or sway a person in making a decision, which would, in, in my thoughts, would be considered like some sort of torture. Does the Chamber of Commerce have any complaints or any proof that panhandlers are threatening people or making them feel unsafe in town? If they haven't filed any reports or documented any of this, why haven't they? They haven't been protecting the people that come to this town by, by filing reports. And if they aren't filing reports, then the article that was in the paper that reported this is reporting false, falsities. If that's a word, I'm sorry. Before the drafted amendment passes, I think the select board should be able to prove any allegations against the panhandlers that they are making this law, new law, I guess, to kick them out of town or fine them. I think I read that they, they were going to be fined. Now, that answer to solve that problem does not make any sense to me. People who are asking for money because supposedly they don't have money, why would we fine them? And if they don't pay the fine, what are we going to do to them? Jail them? That'll cost the town taxpayers even more money. I think we should leave the panhandlers alone. This is a part of America that nobody wants to see, but guess what? It's there. I think I've said my piece.
Okay, now, you've got that on, what, your smartphone? Have you had the ability to print that?
I posted it on the Bennington Banner Facebook page.
The reason I'm asking is, you've used the word panhandling quite a bit.
That's what was...
The next item we have, and that's not, okay, the next item we have on our agenda, we're going to be talking about Article 17, improper use of public way and abatement of public nuisances. And we don't use the word panhandling anywhere. But I think you're gonna, you're referring to, we're taking this up right now, and if you have a way of printing that, it'd be nice to do that. We're gonna, we're gonna talk about it today as we're proposing it, and then we, we'll let it set for two weeks and then we'll vote on whether we adopt this or not, so...
I also have a picture over the weekend in Shaftesbury.
Yeah.
The Shaftesbury Fire Department was on Highway 7A asking for donations. They were stopping every car that went by and they were holding out their fire hats, asking for coin drop.
Why don't you listen?
Now, I think we need to specify what a panhandler is, and if we are going to get rid of panhandlers, it should cover...
Okay. Unless I missed something, we don't talk about panhandlers in our amendment, so why don't you let us go, we're gonna go line by line through our ordinance, okay?
Thank you, I just wanted to say what I wanted to say.
Really, I would like for you to be able to print that, we'll include that as your testimony as we consider. The reason we don't vote on it this week is let everybody hear what we've got to say, make any comments they'd like to say on the ordinance before we vote to accept the ordinance, okay?
Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming forward and just, we're gonna go through it. It's the next item, well, it's not the next item on the agenda, the next item on the agenda's been canceled. It's the William H. Morse Airport, Paul Vincent, the manager out there was going to come forward, but because of a scheduling change that he has, he's not going to be here. There were some inquiries to board members today about what this is going to be, just basically an introduction of the manager out there, and he will be here for our next meeting, if I understand that correct. Is that Stuart?
That is correct.
Okay. So now we'll talk about the ordinance amendment, Article 17-4, improper use of public way and abatement of public nuisances. So Stuart, you want to take us through this?
Sure. We were approached, that is, the town was approached by, as indicated, by the Chamber of Commerce and the Better Bennington Corporation, concerned about people who were soliciting funds on the street or in parking lots, those spaces that we control. Now, we all are aware, probably, of the folks who have been on the median at the entrance or exit of Walmart. That is private property. The folks who own that shopping center can deal with that with a notice of trespass and remove the individual from the property. They're not on the public way. We're talking about people who stop people specifically in the downtown and solicit funds. And it has made people uncomfortable. People have approached not only the Chamber and the Better Bennington Corporation, but after we published the idea that we were talking about this, I was approached by several folks in the downtown who had been approached and although the individual may not have been threatening, they were certainly made to feel uncomfortable by the request for funds. And so we put together an ordinance, basically, it's an ordinance amendment that amends the article we already have on the books, improper use of public ways and abatement of public nuisances, and tries and attempts to deal with, one, people soliciting funds or soliciting other things. It does define whether or not they are aggressive. It does talk about continuing to solicit after a person has given a negative response, blocking or interfering with the person on the sidewalk, using violent, obscene or threatening gestures, following a person while soliciting, speaking in loud volume, all of those kinds of things which would make people feel uncomfortable. I mean, if you don't, if you don't wish to give to someone who's soliciting funds from you, you don't have to, but some people do feel intimidated when they are approached in that manner. And this would basically just give the town the authority and its police department the authority to issue a citation to those people who are complained about and those people who are on the public sidewalk, in the public street or in a public parking lot, in the locations as, as outlined in the ordinance. It's relatively defined, I credit Dan Monks with, with taking the ordinances that already exist in the state and culling from them those things that we thought were appropriate, that we should be concerned about as a, as a governing body.
The items that are highlighted in black or darkened black, those are the changes to this ordinance?
Yes, those are the additions.
The additions. Let me go ahead and read through those so everybody understands, this is what we're working on. This is an amendment to an existing ordinance we have. Paragraph F, aggressive manners shall mean any of the following. Approaching or speaking to a person or following a person before, during, or after soliciting, if that conduct is intended or is likely to cause a reasonable person to fear bodily harm to oneself or to another, or damage to, or loss of property, or otherwise be intimidated into giving money for other things of value. That clear it, everybody, what that means? Paragraph two, continuing to solicit from a person or continuing to engage that person after the person has given a negative response to such soliciting. Paragraph three, intentionally or recklessly touching or causing physical contact with another person or that person's property without that person's consent in the course of soliciting. Paragraph four, intentionally or recklessly blocking or interfering with the safe or free passage of a pedestrian or vehicle by any means, including unreasonably causing the pedestrian or vehicle operator to take evasive action to avoid physical contact. Paragraph five, using violent, obscene, or threatening gestures toward a person solicited. Paragraph six, following the person being solicited with the intent of asking that person for money or other things of value. Paragraph seven, speaking in a volume unreasonably loud under the circumstances. Paragraph eight, soliciting from anyone who is waiting in line. Paragraph G, soliciting shall mean asking for money or objects of value in a public place with the intention that that money or object be transferred at that time and at that place. Soliciting shall include using the spoken, written, or printed word, bodily gestures, sign, or other means with the purpose of obtaining an immediate donation of money or a thing of value, or soliciting the sale of goods or services. However, this ordinance is not intended to prescribe any demand for payment for services rendered or goods delivered, nor is this ordinance or the definition of solicitation intended to include or prescribe fixed advertising attached to an existing premise, nor is it intended to include or prescribe signs or written material loud under any other applicable town ordinance, regulation, or license permit. I need to be, those last three sentences, could somebody explain those to me?
It's, it's really meant to, to tell you what this does not cover, so that you don't end up in a situation where someone's walking down the street and there's an advertising sign, they say, they argue that that makes them feel intimidated, that's a solicitation. If it's a business doing business, and there's a sign out there, it really intends to focus the ordinance on the actual solicitation of money or other things of value from a person or persons on the street.
So example, if some of our downtown merchants put a sandwich board on the sidewalk with their name on it, with a menu on it, that is not fall under this thing?
That's not intended to be prescribed.
We've included written solicitation, so you have to define what is and isn't.
Right. Okay, paragraph H, public place shall mean a place where the governmental entity has title to or which the public or substantial group of persons has access, including but not limited to any street, highway, parking lot, plaza, transportation structure, facility or vehicle, school, place of amusement, park, playground, or sidewalk, or to doorways and entrances to buildings or dwellings or grounds enclosing them thereupon. Paragraph I, financial institutions shall mean any banking corporation, credit union, or like institution is defined in Statute 11101 of Title VIII of the Vermont statutes annotated. Paragraph J, automated teller machines shall mean a device linked to a financial institution's accounts records which is able to carry out transactions, including, but not limited to, account transfers, deposits, cash, withdrawers, balance inquiries, and mortgage and loan payments. And then, I don't see another change until we go down to Article 17-4, prohibitions. Paragraph G, we've added, "No person shall park or leave standing any motor vehicle or conveyance that is plainly inoperable, not legally registered, or properly inspected." And we just put it there, in any, upon any public place. And that's the only change to that there. And then, under the same, we'll go on to paragraph four, or page four. Paragraph H, "No vehicle parked on a public street, highway, sidewalk, or other public place shall be used for the purpose of sleeping. This section shall not apply to any persons traveling through Bennington, sleeping in their vehicle for more than one night."
No more than one night.
No more than, no more.
For no more than one night, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we go down to I, "No person shall solicit in an aggressive manner in any public place. No person shall solicit on private or residential property without the permission from the owner or other persons lawfully in possession of such property." So this goes back to your Walmart thing. If somebody wants to stand on that, if they got permission from Mr. Levy?
Then they can do so.
Then they can do so. So, the person, possession of the property, I mean, would the business on that property give them permission, or would it have to be the owner of the plaza?
I believe that in that particular case, it would have to be Levy because he's at the entrance to the plaza itself. If they were in one of the areas that's legally leased by one of the businesses there, then it would fall to the...
So, front of Price Choppers or Walmart, or...
Yeah, I would think would, it would become more focused then.
Okay.
It reads, "Person lawfully in possession."
So I guess a lease would make them lawfully in possession of that building, right?
I don't know. What's the distinction there? Would it be the property owner or the leaseholder?
Well, if the leaseholder has leased a particular piece of property, is lawfully in possession of it.
Okay. All right, so let's go...
Would be both?
It could be both.
Yeah. All right. I guess I'm on K. "No person shall solicit within 15 feet of any entrance or exit of any financial institution or within 15 feet of any automated teller machine without the written consent of the owner of that property or another person legally in possession of such facilities." L, "No person shall solicit while under the influence of alcohol or controlled substance." M, "No person shall solicit by stating that funds are needed to meet a specific need when the solicitor has the funds to meet that need, does not intend to use the funds to meet that need, or does not have that need." N, "No person shall solicit in any public transportation vehicle or written, or within 15 feet of any handicap parking space, taxicab stand, bus or train station, or stop or in any public parking lot, or dedicated walkway to such parking lot." Paragraph O, "No person shall solicit within 15 feet of an entrance to a building." Paragraph P, "No person shall solicit within 15 feet of any valid vendor location." Q, "No person shall solicit within 15 feet of any public information booth, board, or other structure." R, "No person shall solicit in any area unless the area is sufficiently illuminated to allow the solicitee to fully observe the solicitor at a distance of 15 feet." Okay, then I don't see anything until we get down to the enforcement. And what it says, I'll read the whole enforcement thing. "The violation of this ordinance shall be a civil manner enforced in accordance with the provisions of 24 VSA Section 1974A and 1977. Civil penalty of not more than $75 may be imposed for violation of civil ordinance and a waiver fee of $50 shall be set. Each day of the violation continues shall constitute a separate violation of the accordance." Okay, have I missed anything in the bold?
No, I think you've, you've got it, Joe.
Okay. Comments from the board?
I would, I'd like to, you know, the, personally, as the vendor on the street, I see it a lot, and I've never, I've seen some aggressive behavior, you know, if anybody, if somebody refuses to give them some money, they might, you know, have a few insults thrown at them. But with respect to the different clauses here, I'd just like to make one suggestion with respect to soliciting in general, and that is, instead of all these, you know, myriad of clauses, why not have the town license solicitor? Let's say, Fire Department or other worthy organization and... and anything else would be prohibited.
Then how would you deal with our merch? How would we deal with Jimmy's curbside stand by putting a sign out there?
When you, oh, I'm not asking for anything.
We're allowing that to happen.
Uh huh.
Just just make sure that you're not considering soliciting because your sign's out there.
I'm not asking for anything.
Go ahead, Dan. Come, Dan, come to the microphone, please. Step into the.
Because of the constitution.
Wait, be careful. Go ahead, Dan.
Because of the constitutional issues surrounding this, we have to be really, really specific about what we do. We can't do a blanket prohibition. Otherwise, it's going to be clearly determined unconstitutional. So really have to define those specific instances where we believe that it's inappropriate, improper, and unacceptable. If we just said you can't solicit unless you come to the government to get permission, then we're going to have real trouble supporting it in court.
For Dan Leveson. Is this an issue, a real problem? Because frankly, you know, I don't see or feel it or hear it. And maybe I'm just missing something. There may be some cities, towns around the state that have adopted this. I'd be interested to hear their experience with it. Because I sort of have the same feeling as, you know, does this, is supposed to serve as a deterrent? Because frankly, you know, the enforcement mechanism, civil matter, you know, what is that really going to do? Is this really just to get the word on the street that we, Bennington doesn't like panhandlers?
I don't know the answer to that question. I do know the answer to why we're do, why, that this, whether or not this is an issue, and I believe it is, the chamber believes it is, the BBC believes it is. I personally am approached at least once every, every night that I'm walking downtown. So it's, it's relatively common. Maybe I just look like an easy mark.
I want to say just a couple more things. When I lived in New York, when I first moved there, were panhandlers and the squeegee guys. And when Giuliani came into office, they outlawed squeegee guys, panhandlers, drinking on the street. And this was in the early to mid nineties. And New York City was transformed. Now, we're not on the same level of problems with respect to this, but it is a quality of life issue. And I've seen people on the street feel uncomfortable, at the very least. And while I think every one of us here, and anybody that sees a panhandler is sympathetic to one degree or another, it can be uncomfortable. Now, I've got one other point that I want to make with respect to, let's see. It's paragraph H, under aggressive manner, on page two. And I've circled, public place where, shall mean a place where a governmental entity has a title to or which the public or a substantial group of persons has access. Now, with respect to what you said about Walmart, a substantial group of persons has access, that would prohibit anybody from being at Walmart?
Well, no.
Under this definition or?
It's not a public place.
Well, this, yeah, this is, this just defines what a public place is, Jim. Further on, when you get to the prohibition, that's where the, if, if in fact the property owner has given the person permission to solicit there, then they're not in violation of the ordinance. This just defines what a public place is.
Okay. Not yet, Mike. Let me finish with the board, and then I'll open comments again. I received a call today from, from a citizen who doesn't think we've gone far enough with this. But as I go through it again, did anybody get a, I don't want to mention the individual's name because we all know him, but did anybody get an email from one of our DRB members today talking about this maybe not going far enough?
I didn't know.
Okay. I'll, I'll call him back. Because I see this, I think it does cover it. And it does talk about property title to, and does include our sidewalks, and the firehouse, and our parking lots, and things of that sort. But one of the parts we haven't addressed that I know is, and I've been approached, by the way, by solicitors, I don't know if I want to call them panhandlers. I don't know if that's the correct word. But paragraph H on page, paragraph four, no vehicle parked on a public street, highway, sidewalk, or other public place. We do have a problem, folks, with that one. Our police are off, are responding often to folks who just move their vehicles from one street to the next till we remove them to their. And, and I, I know at least in one case, not only are they parking there, but they're also soliciting from those vehicles on this, on the one I'm thinking of. Any other board members want to address this?
Yeah, I've got a couple of.
Okay, great.
Comments, Joe. I was hesitant when I knew we were addressing this because this is a touchy subject and agree, I, I agree with a couple of things our, our citizens said, and I disagree with a few. But one is that, yeah, this is a part of life that none of us like. You know, it's, it's a part of our community that nobody likes to do with. And poverty is not a convenient subject for most people. And none of us want to be in that situation. I think the, I think the ordinance has done a good job in, in creating the language so that it's not pointed at specific people. It's trying to create an environment. I, I'm not sure what the enforcement would be, except for the fact be able to tell people that you can't do this here anymore, you need to move along, or you have to go over there, or leave people alone. But I have heard quite a few comments from people who both live downtown and spend a lot of time downtown. I've been approached, I'm used to it, you know, from years of growing up around New York City and things like that. Panhandlers exist. And generally, when I say, you're all set, you know, I'm left alone. But I have heard stories about systematic solicitation, where someone will go through and actually go into stores and create a story to try and get people to, to give them money. And then the next day, they're back out there. They're looking for a bus ticket, or they're looking for something like that. And the next day, they're running through the whole system all over again. To your point, if, if a nonprofit organization asks for money, it's earmarked for a cause or a use. If the fire department's out there raising money in their hats, and then they have a picnic with it, and they said they were going to buy a fire truck with it, they're going to be in trouble. Same with any other nonprofit. They do have to tell you what the money's for. If you're out there telling somebody you need a bus ticket, and you go out and you buy something else, it's shady. And I sympathize with people that are upset with thinking they're helping somebody out with basic necessities and finding out they're not doing it. But once you hand off money to somebody, you know, a private citizen, it's not yours anymore. We do have systems in place to deal with poverty. We have groups working very hard to deal with poverty. If somebody doesn't want to be in those systems, I can understand that. But then to turn around and make it somebody else's problem is not fair either. You know, if you're interfering with somebody's business or somebody's, somebody's day to day, I think you have to, we, we have to be sympathetic to that as well. So I'm not, I don't have a problem with the language since I've read it. And, and I think it does give the police something to say where, you know, they can say, look, you know, these are the rules. But, but it does have to be fair, and it does have to be documented. We can't leave it to people's judgment.
I'd just like more.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I agree with this. I think we need to put something in place. I know this summer, there were a couple of, and they were actually groups. There were two or three people, and they, you know, they wanted to get back home, or wherever they wanted to go. And, you know, they were sitting on the sidewalk, and people were uncomfortable trying to walk around them because they weren't the cleanest. And not that there's anything wrong with that. These were hikers that had come through town. So I think it is a problem. It's not a great problem that you're going to see every day. But I think that we should have something in place that can, you know, give the police a little bit of punch to move them along to another street, or just, you know, tell them what the laws are. And, you know, so they don't, they're intimidating. And I think especially intimidating to women, not so much a man. But, you know, they were, these, this group was sitting on the sidewalk. Their legs were stuck out in the sidewalk. People had to walk around them. You know, and they were, I mean, they had signs, and they were loud. And it was just uncomfortable.
Justin, you have a comment, you have anything?
No, no, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Michael, why don't you come up? We'll get you back up. You've had a chance. We'll let Michael in, I'll bring you back up, all right? Mike?
Well, I kind of agree more with Tom, and a little bit with that gentleman over there, part of what he said. But I think Jim Joe actually hit on it. We've got enough laws in the books now. He, he has a vendor's license. And I don't know how a solicitor, if you're not going to call it a panhandler, you can't sell things on the street of Bennington without a vendor's license. So they are violating the rules right there. So, and what Sharon's saying, that's loitering along with panhandling, if you don't want to call it panhandling. But I think what we ought to do is take what Tom's kind of saying, strengthen maybe the vendor's thing. And also, years ago, you used to have one select board pass a, I don't know, as an order or anything, but have a policeman walk downtown once in a while. If you see the presence of a policeman, you're going to stop some of this. These people that are really desperate aren't going to know if you've got a code, or not have a code, or how are you going to find them? Like that man said, how are you going to charge them seventy-five dollars if they haven't got five dollars? So I think, I, I wouldn't panic right now. You've made your statement. But I think I would look into strengthening your vendor's license. Because you can't go out and sell a hot dog or a hamburger without a vendor's license. And you can't go out and sell a pencil if you wanted to sell pencils in the corner without a vendor's license. So I think the police would have enough authority to say, do you have a vendor's license? If the individual said no, say you can't sell. And if you do, here's your fine.
They're not all selling anything, though.
Okay.
What, that's what I'm saying. They're selling, what they're selling is their life story, and you're giving it to them. They can't sell anything in Bennington without a vendor's license.
Okay. Michael, why don't you come back up? State your name again, please.
Hi, I'm Ronald Conroy. I would have to agree with that gentleman right there. And I think if you're going to call it either panhandling or soliciting, it's the same thing. The police do it. The fire department does it. I go to Walmart. There's Girl Scouts trying to sell cookies. There's Cub Scouts trying to sell popcorn. There's all kinds of different ways you can look at it. And I think if you're going to make a law like this, and I heard you mentioned a couple of points in there, I don't know if it was J or H, or whatever letter it was, had to do with selling merchandise. Are we going to tell the Cub Scouts or the Girl Scouts they can't sell cookies in town anymore? I don't think so. I think this needs to be looked at a little bit deeper. And I think we should quit picking on people who need a dime. Thank you.
I still like, have a copy if you could get that printed, please, with your other statement. Okay, just remind the board, Article seventeen, title is improper use of public way and the abatement of public nuisances. Okay? And we spelled it out. And I know personally, if I'm walking down the sidewalk, I don't want somebody jumping in front of me with or without a sign if I'm going from A to B. Want to come up and talk? Come on up. Yeah. You're a business owner here in Bennington. Why don't you give us a business side of the story?
My name's Jonas Spivak. And as Joe mentioned, my wife and I have a business here in Bennington. I was struck this summer, being solicited for the first time by a panhandler in Bennington. So one thing that concerns me is, this somehow feels like kind of a new thing. I've grown up here, lived here all my life, and this is not something I'm used to seeing in Bennington. When I travel to New York City, I'm kind of emotionally and psychologically prepared for being in the city. And panhandlers are part of that atmosphere that I'm expecting. From a business point of view, from a marketing point of view, being solicited on the street by a panhandler really doesn't fit with my vision and image of what I think about when I think about Bennington, Vermont. In particular, I'm struck by, at least in the occasion when I was solicited, I was solicited by one individual. And then about twenty-five feet down the street, I was solicited by another individual. And it struck me later that those two could have been working together. And in effect, it struck me that, in a way, this was another business model that these people were doing. Wasn't necessarily about need. So this has been a concern of mine. I've been thinking about it a lot, and I'm very grateful that the select board's taking up this, this concern. I think it is something that needs to be looked at. I would also ask, though, perhaps as an addition to the bylaw, that public safety officers, or police, or whoever does approach individuals on, for whatever reason, that they also be empowered to provide information about emergency services and help that is available, that is pre-existing. Because at least my understanding is, or my hope is, that we are prepared to take care of the people in this community that really genuinely have a need. And that we, of course, would be ready to meet and address that need. But if it's some kind of a business model, a way to make some extra cash, that is something that does concern me greatly. And I do not think that does fit with the image of our town. And I appreciate you looking at this issue.
Okay, John, thank you. Yeah, Mike, one more.
Let's reverse this thought for a minute, then. So if you're saying you're not going to panhandle, so if somebody says, well, I'll sit down there, and I'll sell pencils, and I'll get a vendor's license, can they then do that?
Yes.
So they could do that getting a vendor's license.
The way I understand this ordinance.
If they're in the designated downtown, they need to be in a licensed space. We specifically state where they can.
And how many do we have down there?
I think we have seven spaces that are available.
And how many, there's a couple now that are taken, right?
Actually, there's only one licensed vendor currently operating.
So you've got six left?
Yeah.
So if we had a smart, poor son of a gun, and he went out and borrowed some money, and went out and got a vendor's license, he could be down there all day long, selling pencils, or a glass of water, or anything else, correct?
That's correct.
And he could say anything he wants on his sign, or anything else. Saying, I've had a tough life, would you support? He could do anything like that, correct?
That's correct, as long as the sign met the size limitations.
We get them on the sign, the sign, but they do. But, I mean, I'm just saying that, what I guess I'm saying is, I, I think that this is a problem, and it's going to be a bigger problem in Bennington, because there are some people out there hurting, seriously hurting. But I don't think this ordinance right now is really going to do anything to curb it. Goes back to what Jonah said. We've got to get these people some help that need this. But if they're going to, I would make sure you strengthen the vendor's license and let the police say, you do not have a vendor's license. You will be fined a hundred dollars, whatever, a day, every time I see you out here. And after the third day, we're going to put your carcass in jail. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I just remind the select board, and Jonah brings up a good point. He's lived here all his life, and many of us have. This is not something that's been common to Bennington. Nor, nor there was the noise ordinance, nor was the kennel law, nor was anything else that we've dealt with lately. You know, we have to look at the times we're living in right now. And ordinances have to be amended from time to time to make sure that we're doing the services we're elected to do, provide safety and security for those that elect us. Tom?
Just, you know, I started the discussion, and I guess my question has somewhat been answered by the fact that there are citizens who feel that they've been interfered with. And that certainly demands response. I guess what I'm concerned is whether or not this is a strong enough ordinance to make a difference. Or is this just the first step, and we'll see how it goes, and then revisit it if it, if it does need tightening up. Because I just don't see that, unless you put this on the corner and pass it out to those that are soliciting, that it's going to make much of a difference. Make, make us feel good, but frankly, I'm not sure what it's going to do beyond that.
You know, I, I think I trust my police department well enough to know that if, if a person was standing on the four corners with a sign saying, I need money to get a bus ticket, and if the police officer went up there, won it, put them in wherever they could give assistance to do it legitimately, but more than likely say, look, we, we don't allow this in Bennington. If you continue it, don't move on to somewhere else. You're subject to a penalty that may be imposed. And not necessarily happen the first time. But we've read the ordinance, it's here. We're not going to vote on it this evening. There'll be copies available, Stuart, for any citizen out there that'd like to see a copy of this.
Yes.
Yes.
Where, from the town office?
The reception area at the town office.
Reception area, town office, for anyone that'd get a copy of this. We will take this up at our next meeting and vote on it. If we pass it, it doesn't go in effect immediately, it goes in effect, what, 60 days after?
Yes.
60 days after the passage to next week.
Has that been reviewed by our council?
Yes.
It's been reviewed by council? Okay. Yes. One last statement. Come up to the mic. The people at home want to see who you are.
Hi, Ronald Conroy. You're saying this could be passed at the next meeting?
We will bring it up for a vote at the next meeting, two weeks from now.
The newspaper indicated that it would go, undergo several public hearings.
This is one...
No, this is amendment to the...
That was, that's what was reported in the Bennington banner, that there would be several public hearings about this.
Why is that?
This, this is, this is the public hearing, it will be continued to the next time, at which time you folks will either vote to adopt or, or not.
Or not. Okay.
So, that's two.
That's two.
Two hearings.
All right.
Two is not several.
It is not several.
Thank you.
We're going to do tonight, we read through it, every change, copies are available at the reception station at town office, and we will have it on the agenda two weeks from today. Okay, moving along, we have boards of commission, just an announcement, we have a vacancy on the Bennington housing, we're accepting applications for anybody interested in serving on the Bennington housing, and as for what, a three-year position?
This will be to fill an unexpired term.
Okay.
So, I think it's a, generally a five-year term, if I remember correctly, so this will be four years remaining on the...
Okay, good. So, loves, anyone else there interested, let us know. We have a liquor license application. Circulate that, Stuart.
Yes, I will, there are two copies of it, please remember to sign in both.
Okay.
Can I just jump back?
Yep.
One second, on the housing authority, is it, do you know part of their bylaws to have a tenant on their board?
Federal, federal rules require that they have a tenant on the board, yes.
Do they at this time?
Yes, I believe they do.
Yeah, they do.
Yes.
Lives on Beach, Beach Court.
Beach Court.
And actually, the town charter requires it as well.
That may be.
Okay. Manager's reports, there are...
Yes, a couple of quick announcements before we talk a little bit about the rescue pumper truck, which is the only action item I have. Taxes are due November 12th this year, the 10th would be our normal due date, it falls on a Sunday. Veterans Day, we give the break to the folks, so they're due the 12th by 5:00 PM. If you fail to pay on that day, you will be assessed an 8% penalty regardless of whether you're one day late, or 15 days late, or three weeks late, so please don't be surprised. The second issue that is, we're going to begin our hydrant flushing throughout the community, will begin October 21st, and it'll run for two weeks through November 1st. That's generally, we move from east to west in the system. If you find that your water is dirty or cloudy after the hydrant's been flushed in your neighborhood, run your cold water until it clears, not your hot water, your cold water.
Where's the second?
And it'll clear very briefly. The only action item I have for you is, is to revisit the issue of the rescue pumper, When we presented it to you, the department presentation had indicated that the cost of the pumper truck was $599.120. In fact, there was a mistake in the calculation made, and as we prepared to pull the documentation together, to formalize our efforts, we found that in fact, the pumper truck is going to cost $612,873. It's a difference of $13,753. One can argue that's not a significant amount when you're looking at a 15-year financing option. However, I felt it necessary that we come back before you and at least allow you the opportunity to discuss it, and if in fact, it's the board consensus to, to proceed as formally voted, we will do so.
What is the second price, or the new price, was that what's within the budget we budgeted last year?
Well, because we don't, we don't have to start paying for this vehicle until it is received, one year after it's received, we're probably not looking to budget for any payment on the lease payment until 2016.
All right.
It's the same presentation that was made, the rescue pumper is, is the vehicle that was presented to you. You recall that there were two bids, the board, the company, in fact, I met with the company individually and collectively, they are supportive of the decision by the, by the chiefs to recommend the purchase of the higher-priced vehicle. The difference in prices is, rather than being something like $34,000 is now $45,000.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to accept that as revised.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, any discussion on it? All in favor?
And I appreciate the disclosure.
Yes, and that's six, four, and one answer.
Thank you.
Okay, so is that, Stuart?
That, that's going to be it for me, I just did, did include the information for you folks and for, because the banner and the herald and everybody gets the manager's report. The tax sales were concluded. We did, in fact, bid on three of the properties that were not likely to be redeemed. After the one-year redemption period expires, we will then take possession of the properties and auction them off. But we felt it was prudent in those cases to make that move rather than simply hold for another year or another six months and put them up for sale again.
Okay.
And there were a couple of properties that did not sell, but we did not wish to get involved in for a variety of reasons.
Right.
Overall, we collected about $140,600 in delinquent taxes.
Okay. Tom, other business?
No, the, the new center, my welcome center is open, and I went up there and it's a, really, it's a beautiful facility, we're fortunate to have that. One of the challenges is getting out of there, once you leave the building, some of these are crude as roots or...
Yeah, I was surprised, I was surprised, coming back from New York today, there are signs to the welcome center, coming from that direction, and Sharon tells me coming down from the north too. So, apparently, the signage is out there, letting people know that we've got a, a beautiful place, huh? I haven't got out there yet, I'll try to get out there tomorrow.
Speaking of the signage, Joe, I went up, I don't know about you guys, but it was confusing getting in and out of there. Furthermore, on the southern route into Bennington, at the juncture of, or where the road splits for the visitor's center, there's no signs saying visitor's center. You have to, you have to be cognizant and potentially going down that road.
Where, when you're coming south?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, there's a big sign that says welcome center.
All right, well, I'll check it tomorrow, because I heard there are, so I'll look at it tomorrow. All right, Tom, anything else?
No.
Greg?
Yes, one thing, on this coming Sunday, the 20th, at 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM, right here in the Firehouse third floor meeting room, there will be the Bennington Cultural Summit Number Three. If you recall, starting in February, we had a series of meetings similar to the VCRD meetings, based on the cultural community of Bennington from the economic standpoint. This meeting is going to be a formation of action plans and work groups, so move forward and try and make this an independent movement as opposed to being run under the wing of the BBC. So, anyone with, with an interest in that or a level of expertise they'd like to share, we're encouraging you to come Sunday at 2:00 right here in the Firehouse, and we will try to keep you only for two hours and try and get something moving forward here that we can start getting some results at. We've already seen some good results over the summer, some of these organizations getting together with collaborations with businesses and, and each other, that wasn't really happening before, so we're encouraged and we're hoping people show up and keep this moving.
Great.
That's it, thanks.
Justin?
Two weeks ago, we talked about revisiting the North Side Drive plans, can we get that on the agenda for our next meeting?
Yes.
Anything else, Justin?
Nope, it's all in.
Jim?
Couple of things. Rick Knapp brought this up with Timmy Cork and, and I thought I'd bring it up with you as well, Stu. The current unoccupied vendor spaces, most of them have a vendor that says, you know, short-term parking, 15 minutes. Unless and until they're, they're licensed, why not remove those signs? Because I, I know that from my own personal experience that, or just from my observations, that when the signs are there, people are reluctant to park there, and, you know, especially this weekend and during busier times, those spaces are appreciated. Secondly, Stu and I have talked about this, and this has been a topic for a long time among Bennington residents, and it's about drugs. And I've been doing a lot of thinking and talking to people about developing some protocols that will, at the very least, diminish demand, and I think that's really the most important thing that we have to do with respect to drugs in Bennington. And I just want to mention it briefly, I'm going to, I'll talk about it at greater length at, at our next meeting, but that would include involving the school board and starting earlier education with kids and in grade school, speaking with the director at the hospital to develop a more comprehensive protocol with doctors that will diminish the amount of prescription drugs that are in the community, as well as the idea of at least talking about a treatment facility. A friend of mine in Minnesota from Facebook told me that there's a program that they've developed out there that the police department works with property owners and landlords and motel owners that, for lack of a better phrase, is a seminar that teaches and shows landlords and property owners and motel owners to recognize activity that's suspicious and to work with the police department in identifying it. At any rate, this is something I've been giving a great deal of thought to, and I'll talk about it more at a later meeting, that's it.
Sure.
Stu, just a question on School Street, are we having the same problem on School Street with this narrower street than we did, like, like we did on Jefferson Avenue? I got a call today, and they said the way that, after you get past Sacred Heart School, the sidewalk juts back out, and they've put up temporary, no parking?
We've put up signs, no parking on the easterly side of that, that street to see what the reaction is, it's on an emergency basis. We'll probably be bringing an ordinance amendment forward to you to make that permanent on School Street. The folks on Jefferson, the majority of the people who live there are not concerned, and they prefer the slower rate of traffic through the neighborhood than no parking.
Okay, but they were saying if people park on both sides of the street there, that you can't get through.
Get through, but only, only one vehicle.
Only one vehicle can get through. And is that because of the curbs that we put in and the...
Actually, no, the street was actually too narrow before, but people would park on the sidewalk.
Okay.
On the lawns, because there was no, there was no reveal on the curb, the sidewalks were at the street level.
But apparently, we, we must have moved it out toward the street a little bit because they...
Lost a foot, six inches on each side.
Oh, because you said they extended the lawns and stuff. Just talking to the landlord. Anyway, okay.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Just a reminder to the board, we have another meeting with the school boards and school administration this Wednesday.
Wednesday?
8:00, for those who want to attend.